Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock, July the twenty-eighth, twenty-two and five. And I'll call a regular county commissioners court meeting to order. First item on the agenda is rolling call by our county attorney, Mary Jane Gervia Thonon. Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Morning.
Judge Ratmo.
President.
Commissioner Moya.
President.
Commissioner Morales.
President.
Commissioner Solis.
President.
Commissioner Gatsa.
President.
We have a quorum, Judge.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Next item is our implication by Pastor Roger Miller, Commissioner's Court Chaplain. Doctor Miller, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If we can bow our heads this morning as we begin, let's pray. Our Father, who provides rest, we come into your presence this day seeking your hand of guidance in the ever-changing atmosphere of our lives. May we make every effort today to make you the unchanging foundation of our lives. So help us this day to see that a decision made in this court will affect our todays and our tomorrows. So Father, we need your voice to be heard by our leaders. May you speak today to our leaders as you spoke to them, up to the prophet Elijah, gently and quietly in the wind and not in the earthquake and fire. May our leaders be receptive to your voice this day as they seek to serve this community. May wisdom be granted to them, may patience be theirs, and may peace come from their efforts to honor you. And we thank you for your hand, which both leads and protects. In Christ's name, we humbly ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, communications commissioners. If you share with the public at this time.
Judge, have something?
Yes, Doctor Miller, please.
No, I do not like to hog the spotlight here, but I'd like to tell you something we did. This is with our program called Skills. And Skills was a program I've been doing for some years. It's called Serving Kids in Life Situations. It's a program which began when I worked in the juvenile probation department. And after about twelve years, the grant funding was no longer available. But after a brief hiatus, we now completed our second summer enrichment camp, Skills, which lasted last week, Monday through Friday, from eleven-thirty in the morning to five-thirty, which is entirely supported by our church, by Kingsway Church. We had sixty-one children from the community enrolled, ages five to fourteen. Our average daily attendance was about fifty-four. So we offered six classes, which included science, culinary. We taught the children how to cook for themselves, character development, arts and crafts, money matters. And this year, we offer a robotics class from STEM programs. And four times a day, the children had an opportunity to eat. And did they ever eat? We have approximately twenty, we had approximately twenty volunteers. Some of them were retired and active school teachers, even some students obtaining honors society credits. And this year was very successful, and we're planning on looking at next year for that. So just want to bring that to your attention. We had a wonderful time, and we served a lot of children. And it was, it was a great experience. We're looking forward to next year.
Thank you, Doctor Miller.
Thank you very much.
Our community is so fortunate to have you and your church and your team helping our community. Thank you so much for what you do for us. Communications commissioners. Well, we've been working out, on Thursday, Chief Appraiser relayed the final numbers for certified values for the year. And certainly, we all know what our county has been experiencing the last few years regarding our mineral production, our natural gas production in our county. So to no surprise, we lost close to two-hundred million dollars in value for our minerals. And certainly, that will have a huge impact on our budget moving forward. So just to make everyone aware, this will be a difficult budget that the court will be considering. And we'll see how it goes. Just wanted to add to the public. Any other communications? We'll move on to public comment. This section provides the public the opportunity to address the commissar's court on any items on the agenda. Members of the public wish to address the court at this time? If not, we'll move on. Item number six, approval of invoices. In your package, we had invoices from July eleventh, twenty-twenty-five to July the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, for a total of six-hundred and four thousand, three-hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Motion to approve is met by Commissioner Solis, taken by Commissioner Morales. Any discussion? We're good, Mr. Thomas? Are you paying his invoices?
Yeah, we're, we're getting there to the, towards the end, Judge, where we don't have any more monies in Texas pool. What we have is a financial bank is what we have. So we still have a couple of payrolls in August and a couple in September. So we just need to tighten our belts.
Yeah. It's gonna be tough. Money toward the end of the year, and certainly some of those revenues that we're expecting from non-profit tax revenues have then come in or then materialized, so.
And we still have monies. We have monies from the fire department, from the sales tax, from the sheriff's department with the jail. All that will equal about, for the next couple of months, probably like a million dollars, but.
We're gonna be more than that.
Yeah, we're really gonna have to not spend monies, you know, outside of the budget type of situation. I, I know it's hard because there are emergencies, but just keep that in mind.
In fact, there's a few on this agenda that have some pretty big bills.
We might have to wait on some of those things. It's gonna be, getting towards the end, it's gonna be rough.
Very well. I have a motion second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Item number seven is approval of checks issued. And also in your package, we had checks from July the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five to July the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, for a total of six-hundred and four thousand, three-hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioner Solis, taken by Commissioner Gatsa. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to the action items. We'll deliver and consider action. Item number eight is an update on Operation All-Star, the corrective action plan. Commissioners, on Thursday, we submitted our response to the findings from the review of the Operation All-Star grant. And I just wanted for y'all to review and see if you have any questions on what pending costs may be occurring or still responsible for. They did have found significant funding findings in several line items. I think if we look at finding number two, it says that items purchased does not match description of the grant, was the line item used for reimbursement. Some of these, they provide an example of the, an item purchased, which was a governor's group GMC for the county attorney, which is a truck for the county attorney. The part of that purchase was used, a line item was used that was used, should have been used for equipment, accessories, and they're finding that as a disallowed cost. We're arguing that, you know, of course, these line items were very specific, but we did request approval before those items were purchased, and we did receive approval. Once review came down, I think they're being very specific as to what they could have been used as. We basically used a line item transfer to transfer some funds from the same department to make that purchase. So they are disallowing that forty-nine dollars, four-hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty, twenty-nine cents part of that purchase for that vehicle. And we did respond to it, and hopefully, we can come to an understanding with the governor's office. One question cost that also came up was the purchase of a vehicle for the district court, a judicial law enforcement vehicle for the district judge. In the line item, the vehicle to be purchased was supposed to be a Ford F-150, and the actual vehicle that was purchased was GMC truck. So they're finding that questionable as to, and the reason, after inquiring why we purchased a GMC instead of a F-150 that was, was available at the time. So they are not posting it as a disallowed cost, but they are questioning that purchase. And we did respond to why that, a different make of vehicle was purchased. Also, the disallowed cost is from the district judge's video, audio video upgrades, forty-eight thousand, two-hundred and ninety dollars and forty-five cents. The amount of improvement to the, to the district courtroom went over the line item that was allocated for those, for that type of work. So there was some monies that were allocated to the county attorney's office, computer software, case management, and those were transferred to make sure that the upgrades were finalized. So that results in forty-eight thousand, two-hundred and ninety dollars being disallowed for that sole expenses. We feel that, and like I said, we requested these funds through our administrator, but in the initial grant application, since the initial grant back three years ago did not allow for administrator, we submitted a grant that had very specific line items, and that resulted in the problem that created. I mean, the money were used for OLS type of improvements, but they're saying since it was allocated for something else, they're disallowing those costs. We submitted in our response that all of these items were being used for OLS type purposes, and we hope to be able to resolve the issues. We'll see how that goes. Finding four, the next page, commissioners. So this has to do with personnel. And as you see, our county attorney's office, they are requiring disallowed costs of four thousand, two-hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-five cents for basically hours that were so-called standby. There wasn't a lot of activity. There weren't a lot of arrests in our county. And that's, you know, no fault to, to the county attorneys or anybody else involved with the grant. And unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of rest. But since there was not any activity, the auditing review feels that these hours should have not been paid to these employees during that time. And that resulted in four thousand, two-hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents disallowed cost for the county attorney's office. And also, we had an additional standby hours for the county attorney's office. As you can see, three employees, that resulted in four thousand, seven-hundred and ninety dollars, dollars and fifty cents, which totals ten thousand, five-hundred and eighty-two. They also, of course, my office had debated during that time for OLS. And during the review, they reported that during that time, the debt of Mr. Montes, one thousand, one thousand, five-hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty, and eighty cents was, should have not been paid to him because there was no activity during that time period. And in our response, we mentioned that certainly there was activity. There had been seven arrests during that time. And we certainly disagree that, that there was no activity during that time. Our, our response to that was that we pressed contention that a one thousand, five-hundred and fifty-eight dollar activity to the date of time grant related arrest, law enforcement actions did occur during that period, including arrests recorded on March the ninth, twenty-twenty-three. These events culminated in court activity directly tied to the OLS grant. And we are submitting documentation to. So we are gonna request that that be removed from their findings. Moving on to finding five, these, there were some activity logs during the review that did not match earnings statements. And this was in the county clerk's office for a total of a hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-five cents for three of the employees. And then also in finding five, which has a total of two thousand, four-hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-one cents, there were also activity logs that were not provided from several JP clerks. And, and I think the failure for the district judge, which has a balance of four hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-six cents, during that time, he was at a conference, so they feel that even though he was working, it was not OLS-related. And I think they're, they're being very specific, very, I think, kind of the word to say, nitpicking on, on exactly what these hours. It was very difficult for, for an employee to say whether he was working OLS or not. It was, so it was a difficult process. So I, they're, it's certainly no wrongdoing by, by any of the employees, but certainly, they're finding that we, according to them, these monies should have not been paid to these employees during that time.
Judge, what about the question costs? I see we have disallowed costs and we have question costs.
Questions? They are concerned about how we attract the grant through our GL accounting, how some of the grant was not, had a line item to itself. And certainly, we had discussions with our county auditor and our administrators that work with our GL accounting to make sure that in the future, we will adhere to, to what the state recognizes, how those grants are administered.
So as far as these question costs, will they come back later and say?
No, because we've taken that action. I think the largest question cost was on our timekeeping.
The constable vehicle, I see, three-hundred and three thousand?
Yes. They, we have, of course, responded to that. I think the main portion of it was the timekeeping, the seven-hundred and seven dollars, which we have taken corrective action. There will be no payroll paid to employees without them doing, using the button mechanism that we have. And yes, on the constable vehicles, I think that is what we're doing. I'm not seeing that in our response. Yeah, that was in the official finding. Yeah, the official report. But what we are responding is to what the corrective action that they submitted back to us.
The disallowed cost is what we're gonna have to pay back no matter what we fight.
Well, right now, the disallowed cost as far as, which is the a hundred and forty thousand for, a hundred and fifty thousand for those vehicles that were purchased from the lines that were not supposed to. Of course, we're distributing that. The timekeeping of those personnel that do not match up to their logs. Also, the payment rate cost, the amount paid to the administrator that were charged. He was charging on a ten percent rate that was approved by the state. Given that the grant went over three years and the amount was reduced, they feel he was overpaying or paid a certain amount. So we responded to that. Certainly, we'll, we'll see what, and that is on the free overcharge or a cost, disallowed cost of a hundred and forty-two thousand, a hundred and forty-two dollars that was paid to him. So we are responding to that. We'll see what, what their response to that.
Now, where was our administrator throughout all this process?
Well, on, on a lot of these commissioners, it was before we hired an administrator. So the line items were created basically to the sheriff's department type thing. And because they were so specific to each department, that ended up being a hindrance to the grant. Certainly, I think the state in getting Operation All-Star out did not allow for administrator in the grant. And I think that affected how we proceeded.
Yeah, because they had to pay costs.
So we proceeded, so, yeah. The administrator tried to correct these, but since they were already fixed in the original grant application, they are going back to that.
So I'm wondering if he's having the same issues with the surrounding counties that he's.
They, I'm not sure how many have been, had the review, but they may very well have the same problems because there was very little direction during that time. And so they, finally, the state did agree for professional administrators to be brought in, and that's what we did. But many of these line items had already been created. So. We have, of course, we want to resolve this. We do have the twenty-five grants that we haven't been able to, to, to move on and to activate. So we are hoping that the government office will respond next week so we can see what exactly we will have to be, you know, either sending back or. Hopefully, we can get it resolved, yes. So therefore, we're on that one.
And that'll be next one.
For the public. And we're hoping, I mean, we, we did, you know, in the, in the end, in finishing up, we finalize and distribute you as soon as possible. It's only critical to our financial integrity. It is vital to securing our border and fulfilling donor's admission to a public discommitment to our region. So, so we want this to be resolved as quickly as possible to move on. But I just wanted to give you an update on where we're at. Currently, I guess, we're, we've got a hundred and forty thousand from indirect costs, which is the administrator, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of those purchases of equipment that we certainly, I don't agree with, with their findings, but certainly, hopefully, we can resolve the misunderstanding on which line items should be used for.
As far as the administrative part, is that something we need to cover, or would that be something?
No, that's something that we would respond to. But on the, on the employees, I guess liability, which is about fifteen thousand dollars. I don't know how the court wants to handle this. Ten thousand, five-hundred and eighty-two for unsupported and unallowable personnel cost. And then five, two thousand, four-hundred and twenty-three, forty-one, the personnel documentation not complete. And so that's about thirteen thousand dollars that maybe we could repay that those salaries were according to the reviewers, not in the manner that they had intended. Therefore, we're right with that.
The other thing that I was gonna ask, when the other part comes in, if we can CC those so we can kind of know what's going on, the trouble is kind of a blind side, you know. This came on July eleventh, if we can just CC it so that we can review and work on it to work.
Well, we had, we had done to this last meeting.
Already?
Yeah. But the response, that time we responded to the.
Yeah, this whole, this was taken by the governors on this.
Yeah. Item number sixteen, Commissioner jumped item number sixteen, is to approve the use of Zapata County Community Center on August the sixth, twenty-twenty-five for a back-to-study health care from three P.M. to seven P.M., requested by Judge Rooney.
She'll be in Canada.
So is that they?
Available, Miss Gatsa?
Yeah, it is available.
Motion to approve is presented.
On the second level.
Wanted to approve by Commissioner Solis, that from the minute, second, and by Commissioner Morales. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, number eighteen, also for the school. That's on August eleventh, Judge number eighteen. I didn't put that date, but it's August eleventh from seven P.M. to, I mean, I'm sorry, from four to seven P.M.
Is it available?
Yeah.
Wanted to approve by Commissioner Morales, second, by Commissioner Solis to approve the use of Zapata Community Center for the Zapata School District registrations, and the dates and the times are again.
August eleventh, four to seven P.M.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Moving on to number nine, to consider and approve colonial planning and needs assessment surveys conducted Zapata County by the Texas A&amp;M Colonial Program. So, Eunice, good morning.
Yes.
Commissioner, that, as we have mentioned before, Texas A&amp;M has been doing some needs assessments for our colonias. And you've been working hard on our community in Salinas for how many months now?
Close to nine months, one month. So I'm here just to, I gotta say, basically, the county of Zapata, Yorshvacha, Roxy, and the rest of the staff to cooperate on this surveys. We had time to visit families and actually break the monotony of the surveys by visiting the families and the needs of the people. And we still need, all over the county, all over the whole county, we need a lot of changes.
Yeah.
A lot of changes. People need, need to, some enforcement from, from us. So the state will go this way, and we'll, we'll help out.
I think, and we have this information that, that has been gathered, will allow the state of Texas to continue with Colonia's program and certainly the funding for, for that program. So it's very important that we review the findings and look them over and for, and see if the needs and your precincts kind of match up with, with what Mr. Salinas said, and Texas A&amp;M has, has found on their surveys. So I think certainly what we'll do is probably need additional time to, to survey and, and read your material and see the commissioners, and then come back with, with any changes that the commissioners may want for.
We're open. Actually, my, my, our main philosophy is to help Zapatas.
Yeah.
And the people of Zapatas. Basically, that's all it is. Anything that you need, we need improvement on this, or we need to change this, we're open.
And those, since you're hearing, also, you have those thinking infrastructure, what, what pressure?
Yes. Anything that relates to particular colonial or a particular.
Because I, I already started reviewing mine, I know that I'll be increasing too. Basically, everyone has the same need.
That's fine. That's fine. So we can make some amendments through whatever we have. And as soon as possible, we can, we can provide those as soon as possible so we can send those.
Yes, we'll, we'll have some things by the next meeting, our next commissar's court, commissary, and we can maybe take some action on.
Get a grant due on November third.
Yeah. Right now, because of whatever is going on, because of the funding for, for the state and whatever is coming in,
we might have some chance.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
So we'll just table this for the next meeting. Motion to table. Want to table by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Morales, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then if you're, those packages, have you all received the packages already? We got three, five.
I have some that they said maybe.
Yeah, we scanned them and emailed them.
Oh, well, I'll have to wait.
Okay. So we, we have the hard topics too? So we, you can take the hard copies with you after the meeting.
Okay, after the meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you much.
All right. Item number ten is to approve payment of outstanding invoices to Anderson Equipment Company for work done to repair compactor at the landfill. So Mr. Sines informed me that I think he had some work done on the compactor, which is a vital piece of equipment there at the landfill. In order to extend the lifespan of the landfill, it's on a daily basis. That machine is, is working on a daily basis. I don't know what he picked. Is this what Sines here?
Which?
My teacher. I can see. So, so when was this work done on the machine, Mr. Sines?
It was like around, ah, last year.
Last, right?
Yeah.
But something happened with the, with the service manager at Anderson?
Yeah.
So we weren't billed for, for a whole year, which was good or bad.
Now, and now again, we're getting this bill, so.
So, Judge, just.
Total of several?
Yes. It's nineteen thousand, one eighty-nine, and twenty-five, nine fifteen, right? There's two?
Yeah, two of them.
Judge, just for the court's information, for this one, for item number ten, number eleven, which totals out to about twenty, ninety grand, Mr. Commissioner Gatsa asked me right before the meeting if we were able to pay it from the certificate obligation.
Okay.
So I put in a call to Mr. DeGherina, our, and he, he didn't know. He, he was gonna call Mr. Our bond consul, Dan Martinez, and let me know and message me if it's a yes or a no. So we don't, I don't have that information, if that's available for y'all, so.
I think especially on, on the replacement of those metal spikes.
Oh, yeah.
That will be for eleven. I think ten, we almost have to pay for it out of, out of pocket.
What is the total offer number ten, it was nineteen, nineteen and twenty-five?
Eleven, I think, is, could be considered for the, I mean, if we could use all of it, that would.
Right. I'll, I'll ask them, because they're both repairs, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's something, I just want to give you all that option, because Commissioner Gatsa.
I mean, that, that piece of equipment is, what, six, seven hundred, a thousand dollars?
What's the total, Robert? Or that, that is your, number ten, number ten.
Which we bought like, what, five years ago?
Five years ago, yeah.
It's under ten thousand.
We're at nineteen.
Well, mine is parked right now.
What hap, what hap, what happens with the compactor, it's these big teeth, right? What hap- what hap- what happens with the compactor, it's these big teeth, right, that kind of crushes everything? So if we don't have it, uh the 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 life of the of the landfill expires sooner because the trash is, you know, is taller.
We're gonna pay this, the total will be forty-five thousand one oh five with two cents. And if it's not allowable through the C O, what line item will we?
Well, he will be doing a a a line item amendment for for his line item. If we'll budget them first.
Yeah, was there any dumb budget, uh given, any type of, even close to to that amount?
I would motion to approve the payment of forty-five thousand one oh five with two cents pending the call from attorney.
It's for both items?
Yeah, one for the.
Well, that's just for one, that's for number ten.
Okay, that's for number ten.
It's one for the amount of nineteen thousand one eighty-nine seventy-two cents, and the second one for twenty-five thousand nine fifteen with twenty-nine cents.
And that replaced the entire steering mechanism for the. Judge Pistons.
Judge, I'm sorry, for for uh for direction, what do y'all want me to do, y'all want me to?
Well, if we could take, if we could utilize those funds.
From the certificate obligation, do it, but if not, it's a budget amendment, okay. If I, we might even have to just table this for next time so I can have that information for y'all, how, I mean.
Yeah, well, they they waited, they can wait another.
Yeah, they can wait another year, you want.
Well, I I think that way we can have, uh you could be voting on a specific thing, a certificate obligation for.
So you wanna reconsider?
Uh I'll vote the recommendation and motion.
And I'll have the information for y'all for next time.
Ten eleven to table for next meeting to to have more uh clear uh direction on how we can take. All right, motion table by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Moya, any discussion, although in favor of the eye. I have motion table for ten eleven, moving on to twelve, uh to approve payment to Ramza Electro-Mechanic Incorporated for pump repairs done at the Los Evangelos Golf Course and that was another emergency repair. The pump we used to irrigate, the greens, then of course the fairway, uh went out, and so we have an invoice of seventy-eight hundred. Motion approved by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Morales, any discussion, although in favor of the eye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number thirteen, to consider and approve a proposal to provide renovation and turf management to the Los Evangelos Golf Course. Uh Commissioner Solis and I uh had, and of course, the Commissioner Brenetina met with, I think you, well, go ahead, Commissioner, you met, you invited.
Correct, well, so we made contact with uh Casablanca Management Company, which is Oscar, who would be Alice, about two weeks ago, correct, Judge?
Yes.
Uh we asked him, you know, who was uh who were their vendors, as far as, you know, keeping up with the greens and the fairways. Uh so they mentioned they do everything in-house, they do everything themselves. So they came uh they came to Los Evangelos Golf Course and they were able to give us uh earthworm work to see what our golf course needed. They did say it was in decent condition, it does need some work, of course, our greens do need some work. Um so they gave us a pricing proposal, uh the total estimate is ten thousand eight hundred and ninety, and that includes several uh different issues. Uh so for an elbow to the list, one by one, so herbicide weed control, we've got nine greens, eighty-five dollars a green, total of seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Now, of course, within nine, we don't have to do everything at once, uh we can do uh what's uh priority for now, or we can just wait, you know, take a new budget, uh hearing from the.
We have ten greens, though.
Uh correct, this is what they posted here in nine. Uh then we have to airify greens, top dress sand provided by quartz, uh nine nine greens, total of a hundred and fifty dollars a green. That'll be a thousand three hundred and fifty total. Verticat the greens and cleanup, it'll be a hundred dollars a green, that'll be nine hundred dollars for the total job. Uh airify, top dress, sand provided by quartz, that's a hundred twenty-five dollars a green, times nine, it'll be a total of a thousand one twenty-five. The fairway reshaping and cleanup, it'll be one fifty a green, total of a thousand three hundred and fifty. The collar and approach restoration, it'll be a hundred dollars a green, nine hundred dollars total. Fertilizer and soil amendments, it'll be fifteen hundred dollars. Labor, uh media campaign, that'll be a total of three thousand dollars. So again, we don't have to go through everything, it's just, you know, what the court decides, what what's the most important uh as of now.
To the new budget.
Or just or just wait for the new budget, you know, after hearing, Commissioner Moya.
I I think, yeah, I think certainly we we do allocate some funds to golf courses on a yearly basis and maybe part of that money that we allocate this year should be a priority to do this, so I I would consider that, we should just use the monies that we allocate on a yearly basis and with a new budget.
I mean, we do have a line item for the golf course, right, it's ten thousand?
That's thirty-five, that we allocate every year for equipment and stuff for the fairway. So we could we could prioritize using one-third of it for this.
Of course, yeah, I I agree with that, I think we can wait a couple more months and take care of it, you know, in October.
Okay, so we'll just table.
Motion table.
Motion table by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Moya, any discussion, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fourteen is to hire Moralea Veda as C P O driver in the voting great department precinct for fifteen, that's four two four slot number seven, and fourteen, eight, an hour effective seven, twenty-eight twenty-two.
Motion.
To approve by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Morales, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discussion of possible action on request for refund to Sidestream, Alcalcillo, Fox, one four five three Odessa, Texas, by order of the Texas Patrol Office, arbitration case R B A E dash zero one zero five nine one. Ms. Mendez, good morning, and uh how are you?
Good morning, Judge. Doing good, commissioners?
Morning.
Okay, um Robert is with me, if we have any questions as far as the uh the arbitration. Uh we are requesting uh an approval for a total of four thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-seven cents on taxes. Um arbitration, this company, Sidestream, they arbitrated the values and the.
So so they protested the values that we set, the the and.
Right.
And went to arbitration?
It went up through arbitration and they lowered it, but it was, I I think it's in your package.
So so the arbitrator said this is how much, they're entitled their refund, so Commissioner, I think, I mean, we we basically have to, it just it just requires Commissioner Ford's action to refund the money to to this taxpayer who went through the process, protested, had a hearing, uh and then went further even to arbitrator and 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 was uh given some tax relief, so.
One thirty-one nineteen fifty-six.
Yeah, for both accounts?
Uh yes, the total was was nineteen uh nineteen thousand, no, sorry, nine thousand nine hundred and sixteen and ninety-seven seventy.
So is that, is that our share or is that both?
No, that's both.
Okay.
Our total is four thousand eight hundred and seventy-three and ninety-seven.
Okay, so that's fifty, okay.
Motion to approve the refund.
Refund to Sidestream with the amount of four thousand eight hundred and seventy-three with ninety-seven.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Morales, any discussion, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seventeen is to request a fee Martinez Electric Services, sixty-six thousand six hundred five hundred and five dollars for two four-inch pumps and a new pan pump panel for setting up through number three, that station. I think this work's already been completed, yes?
Uh it's about to be completed, the the mature probably purchased, but we're ready to to uh install. He's just asking you to see if we uh pay him for the materials that were gathered during the electrical management journey, pretty true.
So we may receive this back from our insurance?
Yes, sir.
So currently, we pay it out of the C O?
And then reimburse it.
And then reimburse. Motion by Commissioner Morales, seconded by Commissioner Solis to approve payments of sixty-six thousand five hundred and five dollars to Martinez Electric Services.
Using our certificate.
Judge, I have a question.
Yeah.
The sixty-six thousand, you're saying that he wants to pay for the pump, is this?
This is for the pump and two pumps and for a control pump.
So there's still, we still need to pay labor later?
Yes, sir.
It's just for equipment, okay.
All right, get the car by there, okay, although in favor of the eye?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you, Robert. Item number nineteen is to review a proposal for dredging maintenance around the raw water intake area. Dredging's not a good word, right, to use?
Good morning, Judge, commissioners.
Good morning.
There's a there's a proposal from um from a company that came and looked at it, and and then we also um also met with uh or discussed this project with another company, and I thought of.
I have it?
Yeah, I have. Well, we budgeted a emergency situation.
Yeah, we, it is an emergency situation, we uh wanna make sure that we have access to the Rio Grande, I I wouldn't say Topten Lake anymore, Topten River, it's uh the Rio Grande and certainly the amount of silt that has built up. Uh the, just this past year is is very concerning at a raw water intake. Currently, we're having to use our our a decent pump to supply the the counties or our uh the lake level. Is actually higher this year at this time than it was last year, but the amount of silt has just built up considerably around our main pumping station. So I'm glad we we have some hope that we can, you know, and this, we we did reach out to the International Bottom Water Commission for help. They seem not to have the equipment, uh so they said they weren't able to to help us out in uh removing some of that silt around uh the pumping station. So I asked the water plant manager and Mr. Gonzalez to reach out to see what type of private firms uh would would do this type of work, and I'm glad somebody was up there, yes.
So, my. What's the primary purpose of this pump?
Is to provide private raw water to the water.
And what do we do with that raw water?
We treat it and then we.
Drink it. Is that what provides uh water for the citizens of Zapata County?
Yes, that's all we have.
Now it's on the record as to why it's an emergency.
It's an emergency.
Yeah.
So, judging commissioners, on on this one, we provided you a uh a proposal from Bullock Construction, but we also got a a proposal from EnviroDredge, EnviroDredge is a different company. What they were providing is um to do a like a silt study, where determine how how deep the silt was in the area and then um give a like a map of what, how much material could be dredged out and removed. And that proposal was, I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars, let me verify that real quick, and yes, it is twenty-five hundred dollars. And the cost is to review the area around the intake structure, and they will provide you a map of what could be dredged out and what could be done. And with that study, I think, we can informally would be able to go for bids if we wanna get multiple bids other than the one that we got from Bullock Construction.
If the county does not take this action, Mr. Gonzalez, what does that mean for Zapata County?
If we take action on the study?
No, no, if we do not take action in fixing the the.
Well, if the water gets low, we won't have.
No, I think he's asking if we don't take action on this.
If we don't, if we don't dredge it, what's gonna happen?
If we don't take action, we'll continue operating the way we're operating right now.
Okay.
Which is we're pumping water from a diesel driven pump and um.
Which costs around eight thousand a month, or how much was it?
The rental is eight thousand plus diesel.
Yeah, so it's it's.
It's an hefty cost.
Okay, and and you're saying that if we fixed it, it'd be substantially, if we dredged it, that we wouldn't have to use that anymore? We could use existing equipment that Zapata County has?
Yes, because there's, I mean, the the elevation of the lake right now, like the judge mentioned, is actually higher than it was, you know, around the same, a little bit higher as it was last year, and but there has been significant amount of of silt that developed in the area due to, we have a tributary from coming in from Mexico, from the Salado Creek, and we have the New Orandi coming in. We have the Topten Lake reservoir, as the waters coming in, the water slows down, as it comes into a reservoir, as it slows down, slowing down by the intake structure, and so it's depositing all that's uh all that sediment that's being brought into the into the into the lake and depositing in that area or along that area. It's not just in in our spot, but it's throughout our um our area, and the water level through the through the lake is probably about two, three P P, and then you have maybe about ten, fifteen pour silt. And that's what the other company, which has around, it's really have.
Yeah, the more silt, the harder it is to treat.
Well, what EnviroDredge wanted to determine was, is how much silt is is there to be removed? We have, we have potentially, uh when we, I went back in on the map that I provided you, the there's three maps there. On the very first map that has like a profile of the lake.
Yes.
On that one, the elevation of the of the casings for our raw water intake, it's at elevation two forty-eight. Right now, our lake level is about a two fifty-five, so you have maybe about seven feet above the top of casing. You have about seven feet water where our pumps are at, but there's silt up to about that point. So then there's a casing and then there's silt on the side of it, we wanna remove that out of it, because it keeps going in the pump and there's been some some concerns from the citizen that there's a smell of the water or there's taste in the water.
So it makes it harder for our.
Time to to treat that, and it is treated to where it is portable and safe to drink, it's safe to to use, to cook and shower and everything, but it's very difficult to remove taste and odor. And so that is, you know, concerning, we keep, you know, the commissioners get calls, we get calls on the taste and odor of of the uh the water.
Is there any environmental concerns that we would have to worry about that would affect this?
No, I would consider this more of like a maintenance project where.
Okay.
It's a, it's, the silt's above, seven feet above our intake, our our casings, and it falls in and some of it gets pumped up and it gets, you know, to our plant, it gets filtered out, it gets treated, uh disinfected, but the to remove that taste and odor is is very difficult.
In your opinion, is it necessary for Zapata County to take this action?
I think we, well.
I mean, the price is hefty, I mean, we're looking at a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
So if if you go with the study with another, a different company, it's, the other company's called EnviroDredge. They charge twenty-five hundred dollars for a study to see how much material's gonna be removed. This one is an estimate to remove, they gave us an estimate of how much material they could remove, uh without knowing exactly, you know, at home, this is.
Almost two thousand cubic yards.
Yes, so I provided them this map and I met with them on site, so they did see it personally, like, so they kind of have an idea of what they're gonna get to. And um.
No study, they haven't studied anything.
Well, they wanted to look at it in person.
I mean, the silt is visible, I mean, now now it's got a few feet of water over it, but.
But we have photos of of the silt when when it was maybe a foot lower, I mean, the, I think the lake level went up like two feet or with this.
About a foot, yeah.
So, so, Gonzalez, would we, would we be okay uh if we go out for bids, do the proper steps, or since, I know it's an emergency? So that that's why I'm asking if if we would be okay going through, you know, taking more time, you know, going through the proper steps, the proper channels, right, since it's over the fifty thousand dollars?
I think you would, you're you're pumping with the diesel pump, um and you're you're, I think you, did you already include the other item? Or the repairs to the intake?
For the sunny, not the one, or?
No, no, for the one on this.
No, it's not on the agenda.
It's not on this.
So, so that was, and that one, I'm glad you brought it up, so the effect on our on our total system that the silt is having is our pumps are running up. And and they're not like, there are heavy duty pumps that range from a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand each.
That's actually gonna be my next question.
Yes, so our, in fact, uh I advised our our water plant manager, because it is an emergency to procure uh a pump, a brandy pump, and but that hasn't, the price hasn't come to us yet, but you're looking at over a hundred some thousand dollars just to purchase that pump.
And that is my question to you, what is your recommendation as far as today, today's action?
Before you answer that. With the excess silt, what's happening is. With the excess silt, what's happening is basically when the pump is suctioning the water, there's excess silt. It's like if it's sandpaper going into the pump. So, uh, you know, it's, it's causing damage inside the pump quicker just because of the excess silt. It's just sending waters with the extrusion process, but we're going to do that right now, you know, I, I.
No, no, you.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, our pumps are running up quicker. Uh, I, I think my, my question, and I, I, I think it'd be difficult to answer, is, okay, so the whole lake is full of silt. So we, we remove the silt among the, around the immediate area of the pumps, how soon before it, it all comes back? And I don't know.
We can reap it out.
I don't know if we can invest, if it's worthwhile to invest two hundred thousand dollars and have the same problem six months later.
Uh, which, since I did, since I did recommend to the contractor that did come to the site to do two different proposals. One of them was just to clean our, our casings.
Okay.
And, you know, just, just the casing, he said, we have to get, get down in there with some divers, uh, even though it's low water, uh, but they would have to go. The casing is maybe like ten foot deep, so they would have to get in there with a smaller suction, uh, hose, clean out the, the pipes where our pumps are pumping from. That proposal is a much lower cost.
Yes.
So, um, you know, in lieu of having, I would have to have a study so that we know in this how much we have, but if, if you wanted to go with something, I would, you know, you'd go with that. Cause the other ones, you know, the proposal's a hundred, you know, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So if you're, if you're going with one eighty-nine, it's, it's.
You guys probably see, not knowing how, how long.
How long would last and if we, if we may be able to do that and then approve the study from EnviroDredge, it's twenty-five hundred dollars. Then what, whatever report they provide us, we can, uh, package that into a set of specs so that we can bid it out formally. And get then, uh, Bullock and everybody else.
I think that may be a pretty major, you know, so much shorter.
That study be, uh, allowable and with the C O, uh, purchased through the C O, since it's not equipped? It's sort of.
We can, we can, we can.
Does it make a move to, uh, uh, the invoice for sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty? This will consist, uh, divers to clean out around the area, around the casing and then to include, uh, the survey as well.
From the other company.
Thirty-five hundred dollars, this study as well.
Environment.
That'll be my.
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Raza, any discussion, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez, on the C O, how much do we have left? I mean, I know we have a lot of grant matches.
Oh.
I'll pay that one.
One works had one point two five, so they'll be coming from one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had.
Yeah. Yeah.
For sure, one point two five?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for, before I move on just over, we will on, I forgot to mention communications, I talked to the sheriff, uh, earlier this week. They're having issue with their air conditioning system, uh.
Sheriff, not good, sheriff?
Yeah, I mean, they've been without A C for this whole past weekend, they still continue.
Really?
Yeah, but we had to purchase a, a, I think it was a compressor and then the other side, you know, messed up.
No, those are, we can't, those are emergencies, you can, Mr. Figueroa can attest to that, we can get, get them replaced.
Even at the jail, the county jail, you know, and we're pretty full, we're at about thirty-five.
No, we, we can't wait on those things. Yeah. Get them fixed. Okay.
If I may, on, on the sheriff's office, we had a meeting with the sheriff and his staff this week and, for this past week. And, uh, we went over his, uh, his project for the offices that, that, uh, were cleaning for them. And we did, um, did a walkthrough of the existing facilities. There is, we had a little bit of rain, uh, this past month or so and there are some spots that we're getting leaks in the existing building and we are providing a new building. But we recommended that the existing building, the roof you look at to see if we can repair those, uh, spots or if a whole new roof would be, uh, I guess warranted. They, we did reach out to a roofing company, provide a, I guess, a, an estimate for, uh, I guess a report on those leaks.
Okay.
It was a forty-five hundred dollars and we provided, um, what they would be, I guess, going to review the, uh, the, the existing facility. But it wouldn't just be the sheriff's office, it would be the jail as well, so it'd be the whole existing building.
Is it leaking inside the female facility as well?
It's, um, I don't know about inside the, uh, female facility, but I know that in the sheriff's office, they did, um, uh, see two, two different spots where it, it is leaking in, in, in the building. And, uh, they didn't mention anything on the female facility. We get, we'll, we'll have it inspected so that the whole roof gets inspected, if there's something that just, you know, but I just wanted.
Well, that would be part of, uh, the scope of work for, for the act, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that, something's going to be out of pocket from the county, but, but you can include it as part of.
Correct, yes.
Alright.
Is ruining, uh, from the back to school, uh, health there?
Morning Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry, I'm late.
Good to see you.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, just a little information about the back to school, uh, I heard that you guys already approved it, thank you so much. I know that we try to do one every year, we've done it in Sunny Nacio, this, this time we're going to do it here in Zapata. The back to school, uh, usually consists of immunizations that are, they're provided for the children, the kids that need their immunization before they go back to school. So there will be immunization, I think we're, we're going to have somebody also offering, uh, free haircuts, hopefully they, they'll make it. And, uh, several programs and companies that'll be out there giving information, like WIC, you know, for the pregnant women and there's a lot of information. There's a lot of companies that are coming from Laredo as well. And like I said, they, they will be giving out information to the community and also, you know, they'll probably give a few back to school, um.
Supplies.
Supplies, yes.
Anything you need from, from the court?
No, Judge, I think we're, I mean, just as long as we can use the community center, that's helping out. Uh, we're, they're providing tables and, and chairs and everyone's invited.
Thank you.
It's not just for certain, just companies, anyone can show up, set up a table, give out information or school supplies for the children. And, uh, I want to make that also as well to make, you know, she was the one letting you know there was, uh, availability for that date. It'll, yeah, hopefully we'll have a good turnout for, for that date.
I'm sure you will.
I'm sure you will and thank you both for this, and I know a lot of families look forward to this event.
Yes, they do, because especially like for the back to school supplies, any little thing that they give them up, they'll be happy, so. And especially family information that, that will be given out.
Very cool.
We'll hope to see all of you there.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you want to make a motion of approval line item transfers twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Raza, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Good morning, Judge, sorry, just really quick, uh, I didn't get to say in communications, we accepted delivery of our tanker, of our new tanker over the weekend. But we brought it this morning outside, I would like to, like, the court, any members of the public, if y'all want, would like to go after Commissioner's Court outside just to take a look at it and maybe take some pictures.
Okay.
Alright.
So what was our match for that?
It was, uh, the, the graph was two hundred and fifty and the truck was originally four thirty or four forty, but they brought it down to four hundred. And so the county paid for it first.
Yes.
So it's about, it's about a hundred and, a little under two hundred grand.
I think you already approved the, the pay for it.
Yes.
I guess we'll have to come back and see exactly.
Well, I think that was part of the C O also, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll go back to the notes, but.
Okay.
That's part of the C O.
Those are grants.
Before, before we adjourn, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, the update on the oil?
Oh, yeah.
That's, uh, that's something that we're talking about.
Sure, here.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Judge, on the oil, which the drainage project you have for, um, Texas C D G, uh, one nine, C R C one ninety-one. Um, that one is, those two projects, the one for the drainage and the one for the booster station are in the same grant fund, uh, cycle. Judge had, uh, had asked, uh, and Commissioner Mo has asked, when the timeline was going to be expiring for that project? It expires on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. So we have, we have time for reimbursements on any work that gets done that's, uh, allocated within the project budget. We will come back at next Commissioner's Court meeting with a, uh, contract modification for the construction of it, for the, the time that was allocated. We allocated some time for the work to get done, we've been to allocate a little more time, but not go beyond the eight twenty. We're still going to keep it within the eight twenty, but from the original contract time, just to, uh, make it, I guess, uh, match the, the actual time that it's.
Did, did they say anything about rain days that, that we have, how do we acquire rain days?
We'll be able, we'll be able to rent those, uh, we've done it in the past through, um, we, we go out and, uh, there's different sites that we can check to see what rain days and then if there is no.
Like today, we had planned to pull out my dirt, the rain yesterday, we had to pump water out now.
There's an unbelievable amount of silt that built up in there too.
It's, uh.
It's about fourteen, fifteen feet.
I went on Saturday before.
There's good soils, we're, we'll have stockpile for.
Yeah.
So we're still continuing with them using their equipment, I know that that wasn't.
No, we have, uh, we have our county using our, our.
Okay, so we're good, we already got the excavator and stuff like that?
Yeah, we're gonna, I think we, there's a, a dozer that we're gonna have out there for the.
A dozer for today, but those waters.
Yeah, there was water, so, uh, but we're using our excavator also?
No, we're, we're going to use probably backhoes and dozers. Once it, once it like, dries out a little bit where we can actually put the dozer in. I think it'll be quicker than, than with the excavator, so.
Thoughts to keep going, yes.
How about the golf course, have we been reimbursed for the golf course?
We submitted, yeah, we submitted it on time.
For the walk.
For reimbursement, yeah, and, uh, we submitted as much as the grant would allow for us to submit. We put in all the equipment that we, uh, allocated out there for the facility. There was some piping that we used for a drainage, uh, the rock that we used also for, for the project. And, uh, the project only allowed us for, I think, seventy-seven thousand in reimbursement. The rest was in kind from the county that we were going to put in. We did end up putting in about a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, you know, man hours and equipment hours and.
And worked out.
I mean, any kind of material because material, um, uh, the county had acquired it, uh, previously that needed to be transported and be, uh, used in that facility. So that has been submitted and they have acknowledged that they have it, they haven't, uh, indicated if there's any. We did meet with the project, um.
Toronto?
No, from, uh, just a person while I, a gentleman came in, after we completed the project, we notified them, he came in to review and we took him there.
It's a nice trail, a very nice trail, so yeah, it's a good, good project and we should get reimbursed up, I don't see a problem with that. Uh, we did on, uh, on those, uh, colonial project, we have been reimbursed up to what we've been submitted.
Yes.
For the booster station and, uh, and also.
On the booster, the, the, the unit that the court approved, that's already been installed. And, uh, the station is operating, it's working okay. We're going to make some adjustments to the pressure as, as we're monitoring the, the home areas to make sure that the pressure is reaching out the, the homes. We didn't want to increase it off very suddenly so that we don't create, uh, undue stress to our, our facility or system. But we are increasing it, uh, maybe ten pounds at a time until we get, uh, the pressure that we need and all of that.
That'd be good, that's a good project, yeah. And, uh, I guess what we're talking about reimbursements, first, uh, I think, uh, the colonial's grant, I think, uh, so far, uh, I think since the county is the administrator for that, that grant, uh, for the colonial study, I think about a hundred thousand dollars worth of invoices to Texas and international have been paid and those have been submitted for reimbursement. So we're, we're pending those, but most of the reimbursements that have come in, uh, so we're in that respect, we don't have a lot of money at that.
How's the, the safer grants and all that going along?
Those, we submitted all the required paperwork and we submitted two of them. The one was the safer, uh, safer streets for all and then the other one was a highway administration, um, grant funding cycle. Also those, they not indicated, uh, either to Mr. Esch or Ms. Hattie if we're going to get funded yet, but those, one of them was with each individual, uh, grant administrator. And those are still on.
Other ones will be upcoming.
Yeah, and, and the E O C and all that?
The E O C, I mentioned that I, I met with the sheriff and his staff and the sheriff had spoken to, um, Commissioner Cuell on the E O C and he said that maybe in December we might get that funded for the, the improvements that were initially proposed there at.
And the fire department as well?
The fire department, we have monthly meetings with the judges and staff and with the U S D A staff for the fire department, the Rockin Arena, the sheriff's office, uh, the raw water intake for Zapata and the raw water intake for Sister Shores and provide updates on, on all of those. Those have, uh, that one is, uh, I think was just pending a, um, uh, geopack study for, uh, the soils for the foundation, but that shouldn't affect, uh, I guess the building location, alright?
Yeah, cause I know we get a lot of questions, ask, hey, would.
I know.
Commissioner Cuell has sent this, this, this and you guys never started, so that's why I'm bringing it up, just so people.
Well, it's, it's, when you, when you get grant funding, um, they, it, it doesn't come just like, hey, here's a.
Yeah, exactly.
And you just went over it while they go with, uh, you know, with, uh, the, the, the grants that you've gotten, right? There's a lot of requirements and we don't follow them, like to the team, they're very, they, they.
Correct.
They'll get, I, I, I know, at, at the end of, of the projects, I'll get out there, so we try our best to comply with every little requirement, whether it's environmental review, archaeological or engineering studies, anything that's done. We, we try our best to.
Yeah, it was just for public knowledge, but I know we get, we get asked a lot.
The comments that we, on the.
Which, which comments?
On all of this, I don't know if you, if you were, if you received the correction plan?
I have not received the correction plan, but I was here toward the tail end of the comments here.
So they were, uh, before, this is a lot of cost, um, so you can go over and see how, uh, this response going.
Thank you, Judge.
Alright, Commissioners, we're good?
And I guess we'll go over the projects, I'll give you an update on the, on the boat ramp. So on the boat ramp also, we, there is a, uh.
Extension.
What's that?
An extension.
There was an extension that was granted for that one and there is a, uh, Army Corps of Engineers certification that needs to be, I guess, completed on that part so that we can get that moving towards the construction phase. We need to request, I guess, construction funds from the agency so that we can then put it up for bids and move down.
Yeah, so we just going up for bid first, I always ask my men that, uh.
I think that's probably the fire station.
So we have, what's the total of six projects going on? Fire station, E O C, the.
Airport.
Airport, and then we have the arena.
And the.
The aircraft and the sheriff's office.
And the raw water.
And the raw.
But that was, that wasn't a construction area.
Yeah, there's a lot going on, it looks like they probably all get started at the same time, I didn't see how those, uh, so.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll put them off for bids and it'll probably be the fire station goes up.
I'm glad to hear that, yeah.
And then, and then the sheriff's office will go, uh, I'm expecting that one to go right after and then the Rockin Arena, uh, will follow up.
Okay.
Hopefully it's not during the, hopefully it's not during the fair area.
Now, uh, after.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
I'll second the motions, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Morales to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Solis, we're now adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.